I'd like to call the regular meeting of the planning board to order here. Well, the roll call please.
Here.
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 Here. Salute to the flag, please.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster, and filed in the office of the township clerk on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. There are emergency exits through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. We have a no smoking policy. Also, no new cases will be started after ten thirty P M. and no new testimony taken after ten P M. In addition, the applicant will be limited to one hour of testimony. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel. Channel twenty-two on Verizon FiOS and channel seventy-seven on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a call, please step out of the room and make a call outside the meeting room. First, we have a resolution memorialization. That would be for Seaview Acquisitions LLC, Block one forty-one, L one-two, and twenty-three, two-three-oh-one, Route sixty-six, Ocean, New Jersey. Minor site plan approval. Would somebody please make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Can we have a vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, next we have minutes for approval for March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the regular meeting. Somebody please make a motion.
Make a motion? My second.
I was out at the meeting.
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, we have two cases carried to May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. The first case would be called Mamano, Block thirty-three point one-four, Lot two, seven-ten, West Park Avenue, Ocean, New Jersey. The second carried case is-
No new notice on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there'll be no new notice on the first case, Mamano. And the second case is titled Delaney, which is Block thirty-five, Lot five, one-two-oh-six, West Park Avenue in Ocean. Again, no new notice will be required of the Delanys. So tonight, we will start with the carried case, case number three. Deal thirty-five Land LLC, Block thirty-three, Lot nineteen point zero-one, sixteen-oh-three, State Highway thirty-five, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C seven. Ms. Krimko.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board, Jennifer Krimko on behalf of the applicant.
We're going to conclude tonight's hearing at ten o'clock.
Okay, so we will get more than an hour. That was my first question.
You're getting till ten.
Okay, thank you. So before I reintroduce the project traffic engineer, what I'd like to do is just introduce some new exhibits into the record. Um, they were submitted, they're on file ten days in advance as requested by the board, but they will be discussed. And what I just want to put on the record is, in the, and I explained it to Mr. Brown, in the chain of, in the chain of numbering exhibits, I inadvertently went from A thirty-three to A forty-four instead of A thirty-four. So I'm just gonna continue with that numbering so as to not confuse anything. So, I'd like to introduce, and I'm just gonna read it, I'm just gonna read the name into the record and then Dan, when he testifies, will go over it. Uh, A forty-eight is an urban jug handle concept prepared by Mazor Consulting dated four-four-nineteen, consisting of one sheet. A forty-nine is an urban jug handle concept prepared by Mazor Consulting dated three-twenty-eight-nineteen, consisting of one sheet. Uh, A fifty is an intersection improvements, Route thirty-five and Deal Road, prepared by Mazor Consulting dated four-four-nineteen, consisting of one sheet. A fifty-one is the existing jug handle modifications prepared by Mazor Consulting PC dated four-four-nineteen, consisting of one sheet. A fifty-two is an intersection improvements, Deal Road and Logan Road, prepared by Mazor Consulting PC dated four-four-nineteen, consisting of one sheet. And then finally, A fifty-three, the auxiliary lane exhibit prepared by Mazor Consulting PC, dated four-four-nineteen, consisting of one sheet. And just by, by way of summary, at, after the board's last meeting, and I'm sorry to see that Dr. Benedetto isn't here because I think he was leading the charge with regard to his concerns over the safety of the layout of the merge lane into the far side jug handle and our site frontage. We had an opportunity to speak at length with Bill Fitzgerald. I spoke with Bill back and forth. And then our engineers came and met with Bill and then had an opportunity to meet with the D O T to get their sign on. And, and as you'll hear through the testimony in a greater detail, uh, what was decided on is what's going to be presented to you tonight. And it is effectively called an urban jug handle. And what that will do is eliminate a lot of the conflicts that there were concerns about. Um, and this is an acceptable solution, most importantly, since they have the jurisdiction over it to the D O T. So while the plans will need to be fully revised and the stormwater changes and everything's changing, um, you know, landscaping, et cetera, before we take that next step, we want to present it to you in concept and get your feedback, get the public's feedback, uh, and then have the opportunity to go in and fully engineer it. And then additionally, you'll see we have some exhibits further depicting the roadway improvements, both on Deal Road as well as Route thirty-five, which you asked for. So, Dan DeSariel remains under oath, uh, as he was sworn at the last meeting. I'm gonna turn it over to him and then Dan, as you go through the exhibits, I'll just reference what I introduced them as. So which one are we starting on? The close-up of the jug handle?
Good evening again. For the record, Dan DeSariel with Lang and Engineering. I'm gonna take you through this first exhibit, which is a zoomed-out, uh, view of the site plan. And it also depicts, uh, what Ms. Krimko has accurately described as an urban jug handle concept.
And just for the record, this is A forty-eight?
So referring to exhibit A forty-eight, essentially what has, um, changed is originally, we were proposing a traditional far side jug handle at the northeast intersection of Route thirty-five and Deal Road. At the last meeting, we had some discussion as it related to concerns raised by the board and specifically Mr. Benedetto. He made a suggestion and I thought it was a good one in terms of getting rid of potentially that far side loop jug handle right at the intersection and incorporating that movement that would be accommodated by that jug handle into the proposed site layout itself.
All right, and but, and just, I want to just clarify, because the ordinance requires the far side jug handle. In effect, this still is a far side jug handle. It's just one that goes through our site as opposed to off-site. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And as, uh, the board had heard at great length from the site engineer, there is a proposed driveway, a right-in, right-out driveway to Route thirty-five northbound, which continues into the site in the east-west fashion. There is also a driveway proposed along Deal Road that would also be limited to right turns in and right turns out to and from Deal Road with a road that extends into the site interior and in north-south fashion. So we said, based on the last meeting, and again, Mr. Dr. Benedetto raised some good points with incorporating potentially that, uh, jug handle movement at the corner into the overall site. So the revisions to the plan essentially are incorporating what is coined as a far side urban jug handle through the site to essentially allow anyone coming northbound on thirty-five instead of coming off to the existing near side jug handle and making a left turn onto Deal Road to head west or to make a U-turn to head back south on thirty-five. They would come through the intersection, head north, turn into the site, make a right turn off thirty-five, travel in an easterly direction, come to this first internal intersection, make a right turn, and then come straight down to the right-in, right-out driveway proposed on Deal Road, and then make a right turn out onto Deal Road. So essentially, those internal roads replace the far side loop that was originally contemplated at the intersection.
Now, Dan, because the jug handle is coming out significantly easterly from the intersection, does that make it less, is there less of a conflict from cars coming out of the jug handle because it's further back in the, in the, uh, chain, so to speak?
Yes, one of the concerns, uh, that were articulated at the previous meeting was that with the loop jug handle, it was closer to the intersection of Route thirty-five so that if somebody did want to make a U-turn, they would have to come across two lanes to get into the left turn lane in order to make a left turn to head south on Route thirty-five. By pushing this right-in, right-out driveway or using this right-in, right-out driveway that's proposed along Deal Road, somebody that wants to come northbound on thirty-five and then come into the site interior and back around to Deal Road, they now can turn onto Deal Road. They only have to come across one lane and then they can either access the through lane that takes you through the intersection or from that one lane, they can also, um, bear to the left and get into the left turn lane that's proposed.
And we will have an exhibit that shows it closer up.
Yes, we will.
So we can, we can do that. And then additionally, one of the concerns was that you would have cars, and there's another exhibit, but while this one's up in the, in the big picture, there would be cars coming off the near side jug handle trying to merge into Route thirty-five. And those cars would conflict with cars trying to get onto the far side jug handle and those cars trying to get in our site. By eliminating the traditional far side jug handle, you're eliminating one of those conflict points and giving a much longer distance for the cars to maneuver and merge.
That is correct.
Okay, how, how many feet is it from Deal Road to, uh, where you would make that, uh, turn into the complex?
Well, we have, you know- We have, we have a bunch of exhibits that have all those-
This is the bigger, that's why I-
No, 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 but I know, but we have exhibits that have those measurements that show the new auxiliary lane and everything.
And what, if I could, yeah-
Mr. Brody?
Is there a speed limit? Uh, because it seems that you're going into, onto this complex as opposed to just around the jug handle. How does that, are you gonna address that?
Yes, the, there would be no difference in terms of the ability for someone to make a right turn into the site that was actually shopping at the site or somebody that would be coming around, going to Deal Road to use it as an urban-
And, and the jug handle, an easement would be granted to the D O T and to the public. So it would be under Title thirty-nine, it would be able to be policed. So whatever the D O T determines the speed limit would be, although I don't know that they post speed limits on the jug handles, but I'll defer to you.
They, they do not. But we would design it for the speed limit or for the operating speed as if it were a shopping center or a mixed-use development in this case. So in terms of the design of the interior roads, they essentially have not changed from what you saw previously.
And Mr. Siano, if he could just hold, let us go through all the exhibits and we might answer it, because I know this one is not the one that he can give you the answer on.
Do you want to go to the, so you want us to hold our questions or you can-
Yeah, if you don't mind, unless it's something that's you're jumping up and down and it has to be asked right now.
And just so, uh, staying on this exhibit, the distance from the jug handle that comes onto Route thirty-five that takes you eastbound to northbound to head north on thirty-five, the total length of the auxiliary lane that's proposed. So again, we're gonna lengthen-
Dan, we have an exhibit that shows it.
Yeah, but it's up-
I can't see it here.
Okay.
I really can't see it here.
It's gonna be a total of seven hundred and seventy-five feet as proposed.
Okay, and this is, uh, A forty-nine, and this is just a closer-up version of what you just showed.
That is correct, and it also depicts, and we discussed this at the last meeting, the improvements that are proposed along the west side of, or the westbound direction of Deal Road. So as you're coming along Deal Road, what's proposed as you come to the intersection is an exclusive left turn lane, an exclusive through lane, and a right turn lane.
And what you had indicated before and what it shows is, now you can see as you're coming out of that jug handle, you're only crossing over one lane as opposed to the three.
That is correct. So if somebody were gonna use the urban jug handle as they come around and they're waiting to make a right turn onto Deal Road, they will cross over one lane, which turns into the right turn lane at the intersection. They cross over that one single lane and they get into, uh, the lane that's next to the double yellow line. From that lane, they will be able to either continue straight through the intersection or bear to the left as they approach the intersection into an exclusive left turn lane.
And also because of the distance, they wouldn't have to cut across immediately as they exit the jug handle, they'd have the opportunity to merge over.
That is correct.
How many feet is it from, uh, where you merge onto Deal Road to the thirty-five? Or am I jumping the gun again?
While, while you were asking that question, we'll, can have our engineers look at it and we'll get the answer for you, because they have the scaled plans.
But I will submit to you, it's further away from the intersection than the originally proposed loop jug handle at the intersection.
I'm just trying to envision where the jug handle used to be and that's where the bank is. So I think that was probably spilling out probably halfway between the new turnoff onto, uh, Deal Road going west to thirty-five. So it's gotta be between those two buildings, the bank and-
I mean, I think it lines up roughly with the, the north-facing parking behind the, the new building that's added to the site, yeah, at the actual corner.
And to just give you a point of reference, here's the existing near side jug handle
Right.
where it intersects Deal Road. So we're significantly offset in further east or farther east than when the near side jug handle comes in.
Yeah, let's go to the next. You want, why don't you do that one? That one's quick.
Okay. Okay. Now, one of the things that Dr., uh, Benedetto raised and I think the other board members had indicated, the concern with regard to what we're gonna call an auxiliary lane. Originally, it was shown merging into the shoulder, um, and not going the length of the site. Can we make that bigger? Hmm? Oh, here.
Yeah, so.
Let's just for the record, what exhibit is this, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, that is the A fifty-three.
Yeah, just for the record, Mr. Weinstein is coming in and it is, uh, seven fifty-three.
So in this exhibit, north is oriented to the left. So at the bottom of the page is Route thirty-five heading in a north-south direction. This jug handle shown on the right side of the exhibit is the jug handle that takes you from eastbound Deal Road to Route thirty-five northbound. And we've zoomed it up a little bit so it's easier to see for the board as well as the public, and then I'll scroll through it as we move from south to north. So as this exhibit depicts, the existing acceleration lane coming off the northbound jug handle is two hundred and seventy-five feet with an existing taper of two hundred and fifteen feet. So you have two hundred and seventy-five feet coming from the jug handle in a full-width acceleration lane and then it ends with a two hundred and fifteen-foot long taper.
Before the entrance of the-
That's existing. That's the existing acceleration lane. So when you come around the jug handle today,
Right.
you have two hundred and seventy-five feet.
Of a, you basically have a third lane before you have to start cutting over.
Correct.
And I'm just trying to understand the relations. I'm sorry, I know you told me to wait, but I can't wait.
No, please.
The accelerator, acceleration lane or whatever you're calling it, where is that end in relationship to the entrance to the complex?
So, yeah, I'll scroll further north.
Yeah.
Um, so again, existing acceleration lane's only two hundred and seventy-five feet.
And then you're, you said you're adding another two hundred and what, forty-five feet, you said? On top of the two seventy-five?
No, so the proposed length of that acceleration lane will be seven hundred and seventy-five feet.
Right. But were you just chopping it up right there for it? You said two seventy-five and then-
That's the existing, just to give you a benchmark with which to understand what the existing condition is versus what the proposed condition is.
So then you have five hundred more feet to, after that, to get to the entrance? Because you said seven seventy-five, so.
No, that auxiliary lane will extend across the entrance.
Right.
I, I think there's a difference between Dan, what's not coming across, there's a full-width auxiliary lane to where it starts to taper and you're distinguishing between the two. So right now, the existing auxiliary lane is-
Ends right here.
Right, but it starts to, okay.
And then it tapers
Right.
to here.
Right, so at the moment where you have no choice but be forced back into the regular lane is two seventy-five plus two hundred, which is four ninety, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what we're proposing now-
Is you will have seven hundred and seventy-five feet in the auxiliary lane which will take you past our proposed right-in, right-out driveway to here.
And then it starts to taper?
Yes.
Okay, so then ultimately, when you're comparing apples to apples, our new lane is seven seventy-five plus three eighty before you're forced over completely.
Correct. So the proposed taper is three hundred and eighty feet, whereas the existing taper is two hundred and fifteen feet.
So you don't have to start tapering until after you, until right after you pass our frontage? You don't have to start tapering? We have a full lane.
We have a full lane which extends past our right-in, right-out driveway. It ends its full width about equidistant from that right-in, right-out driveway and our proposed right-out-only driveway towards the north end of the site, right here. At that point, it then has a three hundred and eighty-foot taper which extends past our site frontage to take you back into, uh, that northbound lane.
So this addresses the concern of cars being forced into the main travel lane before we get to our site entrance while other cars are trying to get into our entrance.
Correct.
But do you, okay, I believe you've solved that problem. But now are you causing somebody exiting that right there and now they only have what, fifty feet of lane before they're then forced over?
No, because there's still a sho, there's still a shoulder, I think, that was testimony.
But that driveway is a stop-control driveway and the design intent is that you come to a stop, you wait for a gap, and you turn into not the auxiliary lane, but you turn into the travel lane next to the auxiliary lane.
No, we're talking about the far one on the north.
No, no.
No.
He's got the right one.
Okay.
He's got the right one.
Yeah, because a lot of people are gonna, instead of coming to the light, they're just gonna cut across to go thirty-five if they're coming west on Deal Road. They're gonna take it where we have now people turn, and they're gonna use that to access it like a slip road instead of-
And that's actually one of the things that we discussed with Mr. Fitzgerald. Effectively, the town is getting the slip road they wanted and the D O T is now okay with it. So you're effectively getting exactly what the ordinance wanted, which is a slip road just like this.
That is correct.
So is there enough space, because there probably gonna be increased traffic coming, instead of going to the light and making the right onto thirty-five, they're gonna take that quote-unquote slip road? Is there enough space to merge onto thirty-five off of that going north?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Hey Dan, what was the number on that right turn movement? I don't remember it, it's being that high.
It's not, and that was one of the reasons why very early on, the D O T said to get rid of that slip ramp because the right turn volume wasn't that high and it didn't warrant that additional infrastructure. So that right turn volume, depending on the peak hour, ranges from a low of sixty-eight, uh, during a Saturday midday peak hour to a high of a hundred and thirty-two during a weekday morning peak hour.
At that intersection making the right, where you just said you're, Deal, Deal Road west, right onto thirty-five north. Oh.
Right.
At the, at-
Just that movement. That intersection.
Correct.
Can we say those numbers again? I'm sorry?
Sure. It ranges from a low of sixty-eight vehicles during the Saturday midday peak hour to a high of a hundred and thirty-two vehicles during the weekday morning peak hour. The evening peak hour, just for complete information, is ninety-five.
It doesn't happen like this, but it's roughly two per minute. But in reality, you know, you get platoons, you get-
Okay.
And you don't feel as traffic engineer, I'm still stuck on that accelerator road where people are coming out and also doing a U-turn. What is there, like you said, like an additional fifty feet past that exit or entranceway to the, um, the new complex? You don't feel like there's gonna be a problem with people wanting, coming north on thirty-five, hanging a right to go in there, at the same time you have an accelerator road, people going up that road, and you don't feel that there's, that wouldn't be dangerous for someone to want, trying to turn right while somebody's coming up? You don't feel that's dangerous?
No, they, somebody that would be turning right into the site would be on their side of the center line and anyone coming down from the middle of site wanting to make a right turn onto thirty-five northbound would be on their side of the center line.
No, I'm, right, but you've added another step to it. You have the accelerator road, you have somebody on thirty-five wanting to turn into the complex, and then you also have somebody coming out of the complex turning right onto thirty-five. So you've got three scenarios in one cluster, if you will. And you don't feel that that's a dangerous scenario?
I do not.
That's basically the setup. This is, this is basically the setup, Dan. Let me ask my question. This is basically the setup, Dan, that you have on every single as safer, safer than the setup you would have on any development on a highway.
That's correct. We, again, even with this revised concept, we comply with every design standard that D O T has as it relates to both auxiliary, auxiliary lanes as well as driveway locations and movements into and out of the proposed driveways.
But putting that aside, any- But putting that aside, anytime you have development on an, at or near an intersection on a highway, you're always going to have the cars traveling on the um highway and those cars trying to make the turn into the site and the turn out of the site. It's the same movements that would happen up and down the highway.
That is correct, and just to give you some perspective, the right-in, right-out driveway that's proposed as part of this application could be as close to the Deal Road intersection as a hundred feet. It's something called corner clearance and the DOT requires a minimum of a hundred-foot corner clearance from a signalized intersection. We're more than five hundred feet away from the intersection and, and, and that's why I respectfully say, in my opinion, I think the driveway will operate safely. And that's one of the reasons why, we are further from the intersection, five times farther from the intersection than we would otherwise be allowed.
Is there an assumption that the uh, that the traffic signals also meter this some to create gaps in, in the traffic?
Uh, yes.
Presuming?
Yes, the, the traffic signal at Deal Road will platoon traffic and create gaps in the traffic stream.
Okay. Hey, can I, I, I'm not sure if you guys went, since apologies for being late, Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Weinstein, that's fine.
Um, did you guys talk about the issue in having a U-turn inside the, the complex yet? You guys talk about the, you haven't discussed that yet?
Proposing.
Alright, so we wait till, get to that.
Well, no, we went over, we did go over that slide already, it's called the urban jug handle. We didn't, just by way, very quick summary, we'd indicated that we spoke, they met with Bill and then based on Bill's suggestions went and met with the DOT and DOT accepted what this is now called an urban jug handle through the site.
Right.
So that was presented, so if you'd like it, we could go back to that slide.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just uh curious about the um, speed of cars going through there and you know, I'm sure you guys talked about that, yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's what I meant, you guys.
And, and just for complete information.
That, that, that's okay, you don't have to.
The, those interior roads, the design of them do not change as it relates to uh their design speeds and their operating speeds and, and Ms. Krimko quite correctly pointed out, Title Thirty-nine will be enacted on the site and in particular the urban jug handle to give the police enforcement powers.
In, 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 in your experience with urban jug handles, do you, do you, do you know what things like accidents occur and do you have any? Do you have any statistical?
I do not.
As opposed to just a regular jug handle, do you have any insight into that?
I do not, I can only talk anecdotally, there's one in North Brunswick that I've used all the time and it's in a big movie theater complex.
There's one at the corner of uh West Park Avenue.
Yeah, the West Park, yeah, yeah. But there aren't as many stores in that area, right, the corner of West Park?
Let's say, there are. You have a, a, a left into the parking lot that isn't get used very often, right? Or the, the left into BJ's certainly.
BJ's, right.
You have a driveway into the new office building. You have a driveway coming out of the pharmacy. Think you can go in there also, two-way drive.
Yeah.
You have two, two-way driveways on the east side. I don't remember what comes out of Shaheen's Office Building, that may just be an exit.
Right.
There's no west going to the.
But you don't have as many, many big anchor developments as you have here. Right, there's a lot of parking things coming in, people coming out, you know, shooting around and.
I, I, I have a, a thought, I don't know if we could go back to the very first slide, just something to discuss along those lines. I was just hypothetically, and it's hard to show from here if you don't mind, I, I didn't bring a pointer.
Here, give him the pointer.
This driveway is, is your urban jug handle in a sense, it, it's the north-south leg of it.
Yeah.
Uh, the urban jug handle looks like that. My question is, is it possible? Rethink things a little bit and take this pad, eliminate this driveway at this location and put it on this side of this pad, slide that pad over. Have it go around the east side of all the development to minimize in a sen- in a sense, the number of conflicts with it.
But wouldn't that, but.
Ercation between the commercial and the residential.
The, the only thing we would lose would be the buffer between the commercial and residential.
Why, you wouldn't lose the buffer at all.
Cause the road would, well, no, the road would be in the buffer, I think.
No, I'm gonna take this pad. I mean, I'm not saying you have to do it exactly this way, but just, just asking hypothetically, take this pad, slide it over and take this road and slide it along the east of the edge of that pad. The pavement in essentially the same spot, puts the road around the east side of everything, in essence gives you a slip road.
And you're okay with the distance, it would be t- to the east and closer to the residential?
Well, you could put a, you could put a fence and solid screening.
We could do a nice buffer there, I, I don't think it's.
No, I'm talk, I'm talking about across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that at all, I would, many feet from across the street.
Okay.
I, I think it's worth looking at, am I said, you know, I'm, I'm asking a simple question, if it can be looked at, if it can be accomplished, it doesn't, it seems to me it makes some, and addresses further some concerns the board's asking about speed and number of intersections and potential conflicts on the site. If it can be achieved without impacting anybody adversely, it, it's worth looking at, at, at all, I'm saying, I'm not saying this.
Bill, I, I have a question on that though. How are they gonna access the fast food and everything else?
The hope?
The, the restaurants, if you're coming in, you wanted to go to a restaurant, how are you gonna be able to get over into the restaurant area because you're moving that pad over?
If you access them now, you, you would, in this configuration, you would come in here and, and make a left for this.
I'm saying if you're coming off of thirty-five, I was saying.
Okay, if, if it was here, you would need a path through here to get over to them, but it, it's still, it, I'm only asking a hypothetical question, I'm thinking that it might have a whole lot less conflicts. You know, and then again, as Dan pointed out, it's not an enormous number of vehicles that are making this movement.
I can't believe that.
I'm thinking it may be more personally, because I think people avoid northbound Deal Road to westbound, I'm sorry, northbound thirty-five to westbound Deal Road, like the plague.
Yeah.
You go at a Lair Avenue, you cut through Middlebrook, you do anything you can to not get in that queue to try to make a left onto Deal Road West.
I think we all, we all know the backroads, right?
But I, I think the movement is gonna increase some, but I don't think it's an overwhelming, I, I don't think it's like a hundred and fifty cars per hour waiting to make that, that turn, but I'm just asking hypothetically if that's a, would it be a more effective slip road with less intersections inside?
But Bill, a question for you with that, just in response to the, the more and people avoiding like the plague, because we're adding that extra right turn lane and we're widening Deal Road, it's gonna make that portion of the intersection flow better anyway. So it might be that more peo- less people might need the slip road because the right turn movement at Deal Road will be more fluid.
And, and that may well be, you know, I, I, we don't have any new numbers, we're just talking concepts, I'm just throwing a concept out, but we happy to sit and talk with you about it.
What is the thing directly to the east of that proposed restaurant be, it's got the lines and the circle? What, what exactly?
Community garden, I asked, I asked the same question.
Okay, yeah, alright, looks like a spaceship on here, that's why I was asking.
We talked about that last time.
This, this thing, yeah, I don't know, okay. And then would, and then as proposed right now, is there some sort of screening, so you've got the community garden in between the restaurant? This bo- thick black line that you're showing in between the townhouses, is that some sort of screening or is that just gonna be open as it stands right now?
No, there was, there wa- there was testimony at the previous hearings that there was going to be a fence at the back line of the townhouses. And then there was going to have landscape added around the community garden, but should we get to it tonight? It wasn't ten days in advance and in response to Bill's comments with regard to an offset intersection and the location of the community garden, we found what we think is a different location for the community garden that takes it out of that Deal Road front yard, we just didn't have it in ten days in advance to show it to you.
Yeah, if you could have a, a, a nice buffer, because if we do slide it over, I'm just thinking of the residents in the townhouses, you know, at night, lights, people turn in with their lights hitting them.
There will be a six foot, there was testimony at one of the previous hearings.
Oh, six foot enough?
For, for, for lights, sure.
I'm just saying, for car headlights at night?
Well, on the other hand, Peter, you would take the parking lot lights and move them farther away from the residents.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, this, but I, I don't, you know, I, I don't think that movement's gonna be a heavy movement after say nine o'clock at night.
Yeah. Makes sense.
I, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's non-existent, but you know, ten, fifteen cars an hour isn't gonna, especially if there's a good buffer. But it was only a concept, you know, something to think about while we're talking about concepts. I think it's a more effective slip road in that location, cause there are less intersections on the right side of it.
This isn't necessarily a traffic question, but um so you've taken out the jug handle, you've added the bank. In the, in the ordinance, are you allotted a certain amount of square footage of commercial space?
I'm glad you asked that.
Can you, can you
I can.
Make your case on how this complies, please?
Uh, i- it, it's not a matter of making the case, but just as a matter of fact, there are um minim- there are maximum amounts of the different types of development. And as the board's professionals may remember, during the process of rezoning and the initial, the first, one of the beginning iterations included a, I think it was seventy thousand square foot LA Fitness? Thirty-five thousand square foot LA Fitness, a lot more office, a lot more retail, all of it conforming, even with the proposed bank. Um, let me just pull it, oh, thank you, even with the proposed bank, so, and this is just factual from your ordinance. Uh, the ho- maximum hotel could be ninety thousand square feet, we're at eighty-three thousand four hundred and eleven. The maximum quick service restaurant could be ten thousand square feet, we're at five thousand two hundred and eighty-eight. The maximum retail for an individual user could be thirty-five thousand square feet, we're at five thousand four hundred square feet. The maximum restaurant A square footage permitted is ten thousand square feet, we're at four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six. Maximum office, uh, the maximum office total is fourteen thousand square feet, we're at four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six. Uh, the maximum bank square footage would be ten thousand, we're at three thousand five hundred and fifty. The maximum convenience store would be six thousand, we're at five thousand and fifty-one. And importantly, the minimum commercial lot area would be fourteen acres, we're ne- would now be at sixteen point sixteen acres. And the maximum commercial building footprint as it relates to the tract is allowed to be eight percent. As proposed with the bank, we're seven point three one percent. So we are significantly under what is permitted in every single category. Let me rephrase that, we're under in every category, significantly in some.
I understand that, but. I, I guess, I mean, looking back at this ordinance and, you know, it is what it is. Um, however, I, I just, you know, I think you've heard from this board over and over again, you know, we'd like to see some more green space, we'd like to see it. We have enough banks in Ocean and, you know, respectfully, you know, I understand you're allowed to do what you're allowed to do, but I just, uh, uh, you know, I don't know. Uh, I'll leave it there, sorry. Adding another bank, I just don't understand what value that provides to our town, so.
Well, the, the, the challenge is that the concept of creating this um road through actually feels pretty okay compared to the other way it was set up.
Oh, I, I agree.
But the problem is that at that corner, we lost green.
Yeah.
Right?
I, I guess that, that's a much better way to say it.
Right, so we lost green, so we'd rather not lose the green and have the better, you know.
Understood, but a- as the board knows, there's a balance between what the town wants versus what's permitted versus what the de- developer.
Right.
You know, and it becomes a balance and really we have to look at what the ordinance allows, I mean, obviously, if we weren't allowed this level, we wouldn't be proposing it.
I, I understand that, I just, I, I'm saying, you know.
And your personal feeling on that is noted.
Yeah, when you look at it, it just like, that.
Once again, you're calling it Ocean Town Center. A bank, a hotel, you know, a couple restaurants, a gas station. That's not really a town center, so, I mean, town centers where people congregate and, you know, the housing and the parks and the gazebo idea, that, you know, I think brings it, but.
Well, w- we can certainly rename it.
Alright, I, I mean, I.
I, i- 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 if that's what the concern is, I mean, if, if that then, if the name is not evoking.
I think it says something about it.
Okay, well, we'll look at, we'll look at that then.
I, I, or really you. I, I, yeah, and that's my opinion, I'm a single person up here on this board and you guys are allowed to have your per, your opinions, obviously.
Yeah, I did, I think it's probably we just, we just, uh, in the design, we just forfeit a lot of green and uh okay-looking intersection for uh more of a, you know, a sprawling mall.
Okay, and respectfully, and I'll.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not uh.
We'll get to it at the end when we're presenting all the proofs.
Right, you've met a legal bar, I, I understand, we, we, uh, that is clear.
And from a traffic standpoint, this sounds like a better
Yeah.
solution and from a people not being bunched up on the jug handle like we were worried about West Park has a better solution.
So if we could, we have a bunch more slides to get through.
Sure, sure.
Or a few more slides to get through. Well, no, but there were questions asked at the previous meetings that the exhibits we were showing didn't give you a close-up enough view of what we're doing, so we're trying to give it to you here.
But the bottom line, what we're dealing with is that you're, what you're presenting is in accordance with the ordinance. But basically, that's not an argument that can be had by this board because our hands are basically tied, is what you're saying.
It, the, the bo- no, what I, the board can certainly offer opinions and it's for the developer to decide how they're going to present it, but when we make our presentation, we have certain proofs to make. And if we're meeting your ordinance, we've met those proofs.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
As long as you're in accordance with the ordinance.
I mean, you're, you're, to some extent, you're, it's, okay, would you rather have the older, the older one with the, more the grass and have that jug handle or have it this way with less grass and right, to some extent?
To so- to some extent, but one would be, yes, I mean, it, we were doing the jug handle originally
Yes.
because that was, we were looking at it traditionally, it was only after, I think, the board made great comments and questions that, I mean, you know, it, it the answer is yes, and we're spending a lot of time a- and, and we're going through it because I know everybody's very concerned, the board and the public, discussing traffic numbers and how many cars and the safety and all of those things. And we're doing that, but realistically, as we talked about, you have to look at the functionality of the site itself, not the roadways around it. That's really what is within the board's purview, the entrance and exits and the site itself.
And safety.
Yes, of the entrance and exits, a hundred percent.
Safety.
Yep.
But, Mr. Weinstein, I think that, and, and, and Mr. Brown can tell me if I'm wrong here. When it comes to safety and safety concerns, I'm not sure your hands are tied, kind of a thing.
Mm-hmm.
You certainly have legitimate ability to question or deny an application if it meets the letter of the ordinance that you believe is unsafe from an engineering or other perspective. You're not bound to accept testimony without question. You're certainly entitled to hire your own traffic expert if the questioning be s- between the board's professional staff and, and you, members of the board of the traffic expert or any other particular expert in any field doesn't satisfy you as, as to your concerns. Uh, impacts are a different story, impacts are not so easy to deal with because the zoning is presumed to have thought through that, but safety, that's always on the table.
Safety as it relates to the entrance and exits of the site and on the site, not offsite.
Well, any, a- any, any intersection with, with an adjacent public road.
Yes, from the site, we agree, which is what we.
And safety on the site.
A hundred percent, we agree, so that's what I was talking about, so the safety issues are within the board's purview as they relate to access to and from the site and on the site. What I was saying was the traffic generation
Oh, yeah.
is something separate that, you know, and the amount of development is something separate, as long as it can be demonstrated that the ingress and egress and site circulation is safe.
Right, it's just that if the traffic generation is, and it's, I'm not suggesting it is, though, hypothetically, if it's so bad that it makes the condition untenable or unsafe, then you, then you're allowed certainly to question it all you want.
Agreed, so we're saying the same thing.
Also not, not to belabor, you know, or, or, you know, to, you know, wanna move this along, but I, I think what, what they're kinda getting at is that when, when, you know, mentioning the green, I guess, with, with more uh build-out, there's more impervious surface, I think that's that's becoming more and more.
I can tell you that we had discussions about that in, in trying to help the applicant decide on some concepts to go to DOT with and to come back to you with. And certainly, the, the first concern was to address comments of the board which, and questions of the board last meeting, which seemed to go toward the safety of those movements around the jug handle, the far side, the near side, all bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in fairness, if you think about. In fairness, if you think about how much impervious was in that jug handle and it was a, you know, e- essentially. You had the jug handle impervious coverage on the on the loop, and you had a detention basin designed to handle that. And now it's up a grade and it's, there may be more, no question, but I mean, in theory, there. They've done some things to address some of the questions you had, it's a bit of a balancing thing. It might be asking an awful lot to say, well, get rid of the far side jug and leave it green, and don't do anything, you know, I mean, it it's it's a. Corner of two of the busiest roads in town.
No, I thought, I think, I mean, it's a thoughtful design, right, I mean.
Yeah, for a bank.
No, I meant, I meant the the idea of doing the um, drive-through around the community, you know.
Yeah, no, the the urban jug handle.
Yeah, but yeah, it's a thoughtful.
I think it deals with a lot of the questions that we. wished you to come to the table with today. My concern was is that I didn't really propose in my head that getting rid of the jug handle would then allow you more opportunity to build a bank.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm grappling with right now.
That's the trade-off, I don't, yeah.
Maybe call me naive, but, and if it wasn't going now, it'd go di- later, so.
Okay, so I've put up exhibit number.
What is, which one is it?
It's at the. It's the one at the intersection of Route thirty-five and Deal.
The Route thirty-five and Deal Road is A fifty.
And this is a blow-up of that intersection, and just quickly. Again, we're proposing a left-turn lane, a through lane, and a right-turn lane westbound on Deal Road. In order to accomplish that, there will be widening to the north along the site frontage. Along Deal Road, and that's depicted in the gray. In addition, getting rid of the uh, previously proposed jug handle at the intersection. The bus stop was able to uh, be relocated closer to the intersection, we are also proposing a bus turnout. Along the frontage to facilitate buses when they're going to pick up or discharge passengers. They will be fully outside of any travel lane, whether it's the auxiliary lane or one of the live lanes on Route thirty-five northbound.
So that eliminates the concern of the conflict of pedestrians crossing over the far side jug handle.
That is correct.
In its entirety.
Yes.
Can I ask a, just a question, I don't know if it's something that. If you're gonna be making that right onto thirty-five, is that gonna be a no turn on red?
It is not.
Is that up to DOT or the town?
It's up to DOT, it's not posted for no rights on red today, um, and again, that's a shared lane. But, in my opinion, there's no reason to uh, enact the prohibition on red.
I have another question with regard to that, since the urban jug handle will also function as a slip ramp going out to thirty-five. Would it make sense to make those two lanes? Middle lane through, the northern lane combination through, and right-hand turn. Because you do have two lanes on Deal Road across thirty-five.
In order to accomplish that, though, Mr. Higgins, we would have to widen across the bank and the gas station and probably the crowzers.
Okay, you're you're widening actually there, so.
Correct. That's correct.
And those two lanes over there merge.
I try to think, that's about the worst place in the world. The three lanes there to have that single slip will make that intersection a billion times bigger.
Completely agree, yes.
Might I ask you a question?
Please.
So there's a, gonna be a bus pullover area, correct?
Correct.
So I have a question, I'm not sure, but is there a uh, state statute which indicates that if there is a bus stopped? If you have a car, you're driving it behind that, do you have to stop? And yield to that bus?
If it's in the bus turnout, no.
If it's in a bus turnout?
Correct.
But if it was on a road, you would have to stop, correct?
Yes.
Cause that's sort of a recent innovation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then just last thing on this slide that I neglected to uh, point out when we were talking about the Route thirty-five uh, frontage improvements. That auxiliary lane, originally, we were proposing it to be twelve-foot wide, consistent with the existing width. Um, we've increased that to fifteen feet. As part of this revised proposal.
There's gonna be a path from the uh, the bus stop to into the development?
I believe that was testified at the last meeting, uh, uh, it's not shown on this exhibit, but yes.
I was, okay.
You had mentioned it on the other one, I just wanna make sure there was access.
Did we talk to about the uh, left turn signal on going on from Deal Road going north onto Route thirty-five?
Yeah, they shot it down.
The DOT, the DOT, he's asking about the dedicated left turn, we didn't get there yet.
But we, but I'll answer your question, cause I was, I was gonna move, no, I was gonna move on.
Wait till you get there.
But I was gonna move on to to the Deal Road frontage, so we did go to meet with DOT to talk about the urban. Uh, jug handle concept, they did endorse that concept, I specifically asked the question, could we pursue? A direct left turn eastbound Deal Road onto Route thirty-five northbound, and the flat-out answer was absolutely not. And the reason, one of the reasons, one of the concerns was, Middlebrook Shopping Center has a left turn lane, actually, two left turn lanes. In the westbound direction that back up to where you would have to put an eastbound left turn lane to go onto thirty-five north. And DOT said absolutely not, there's too much happening in that short stretch of Deal Road. We also asked the question at the request.
But that's the problem, there's a lot happening in that short stretch, so. If if DOT says no, then I guess as a traffic engineer, and I know this isn't part of your testimony, what is the answer then? Cause there's a lot of stuff happening in that little.
Well, that's where the accidents occur, people don't know how to read, no left turn. And, but you can make a left turn in at both those access points, left turn out at the one that's closest to the Route thirty-five intersection, you cannot. From Middlebrook Shopping Center, the solution, and I know a lot of people are not gonna wanna hear this. Is exactly what exists today, where you have to come through the intersection and take the far side jug handle to head north. From an operations perspective, it processes more traffic, based on the traffic signal. And from a pure conflict perspective, there's a lot less conflict making that movement around the jug handle. Than there would be if you were gonna make a direct left turn onto Route thirty-five northbound. And also, to get that direct uh, left turn onto Route thirty-five northbound, you'd have to change the traffic signal operation. Right now, westbound gets a lead phase, so westbound goes, they have a green arrow, and you can also come through and make a right turn. If you did a direct left turn eastbound, what DOT would require is eastbound lefts and westbound lefts. Would have to get their own phase with their own left turn arrow, that's gonna take green time away from Deal Road through movements. So operationally, having a direct left turn lane, notwithstanding the issues with Middlebrook Shopping Center access. Operationally, it's less efficient than what is out there to them. And we had a great lengthy discussion, and ultimately, they're like, absolutely not, and and just for complete information, your engineer also asked us. To ask the question of DOT, if we could have direct left turn access off of thirty-five. So in the northbound direction and the southbound direction, to have left turn lanes. Where you could use those turn lanes to make lefts onto Deal Road in both directions, and that was met with even a more. Expedient response, no, than my first question about eastbound lefts on Deal Road to go northbound.
Who in their right mind put this all together, in what is the fifties, sixties, and we just rolled the dice and went? Here, we'll do this intersection and make it happen, cause.
No, were you here, were you here, Bill?
I was actually here in seventy-seven.
Seventy, okay, well, I will tell you when I record.
And so, I'm not sure that you want my opinion on the public record, what I think of the dualization.
It's just.
E- everything we're talking about would force someone to admit that maybe the dualization wasn't the greatest situation for Ocean Town. As are the opposing ridiculous jug handles to get on and off eighteen.
Right. Okay, fair enough, we'll leave bygones bygones.
So I'll move on to the next exhibit, and essentially, I'm gonna take you now uh, towards the east along Deal Road, so you can see what's being proposed.
Some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting was how we're handling the left turns into the library and into our site. And how it relates to um, the lo- intersection of Deal Road and uh, Logan.
Before we get to that one, uh, Jen, this is the exhibit that depicts the modifications to the existing nearside jug handle. Uh, in the northbound direction.
The board members had asked, how are you going to keep cars from coming off of Route thirty-five heading north? Going to head, going onto Deal Road from making that left turn to go Deal Road west?
So I don't know what exhibit number that is, just for the record.
That one is. Existing jug handle modifications, A fifty-one.
So referencing A fifty-one, uh, at the bottom of that page. Is the existing uh, nearside jug handle that takes you from Route thirty-five northbound onto Deal Road. Today, you can make a left turn off it and a right turn off it, we're proposing, and it's depicted in the gray, to enlarge that island. So that it forces you in terms of a direction to make a right turn onto Deal Road, and there'll be. Yeah, it may have died, here we go.
I thought you, I thought you were messing with me for a second.
Again, just for the record, I struggle with colorblindness. Now you, is it, you tell me when it's up there.
There.
Oh, there it is, there. So this gray area is an enlargement of the existing island. And it will be angled, so it's somebody coming down, it will be directed to make a right turn. And there'll be associated signing and striping to reinforce that it's right turn only.
And barbed wire, so people can't.
Again, as I depicted last time, you can design for ninety-nine percent of the traveling public, but you're always gonna get the one percent that are gonna do what they're gonna wanna do.
Okay, so, I'm I'm confused a little bit, if you're coming northbound thirty-five and you're at the existing jug handle that you were just at. And now you wanna cross over to, over thirty-five to Deal Road west, how would I go?
You can't do that anymore, you would have to. We would ha- you would have to use our urban jug handle through the site.
Not go use that one, you'd go straight and go through.
Yep, yes.
Exactly right, yes.
Is there gonna be signage somewhere indicating that?
Yes, and 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 one of the things DOT is gonna require is that the urban jug handle through the site has to be uh, accessible by the public. The likely form that's gonna take is a easement that the owner grants to the state to allow public access. With that public access easement in place, it'll be signed um, for U-turns and left turns.
You can use your hand.
So this exhibit depicts the uh, changes that are proposed at the uh, Deal Road. Logan Road and proposed site access intersection.
That one's A fifty-two.
So exhibit A fifty-two. So as part of this project, and again, the gray along the north side of Deal Road, north is straight up, depicts the widening that's proposed. So there will be a widening along the site frontage that extends from the existing Logan Road. Excuse me, and Deal Road intersection all the way west to the Route thirty-five intersection. As part of that widening, we're proposing to provide in the eastbound direction, a left turn lane. That would serve the new site driveway that is proposed, that new site driveway on the north side of the intersection. Will create the fourth leg to what is an existing three-leg intersection today. So anyone that wanted to either access our site or access the library. And they were heading in the eastbound direction, they'll be able to have their own left turn lane. And then make a left into the site driveway, and then a right into uh, the library interconnection that's proposed.
So Dan, what that would do then is avoid backup that would be there from cars trying to turn into the library. While there's traffic trying to head eastbound.
That is correct. The driveway itself would have uh, one lane coming out, one lane coming in. There was a question about when the widening and the additional lane heading westbound along Deal Road would start. And we're proposing to start that lane um, after you get past the left turn lane that's being created in the eastbound direction, so. The two full lanes heading in the westbound direction would start. Right here, and those two full lanes would continue all the way to the Route thirty-five and Deal Road intersection.
And do you have any estimations on how many people would be leaving out of this exit in your calculations?
Yes.
Alright, cause having one in, one out, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of feeders into one in, one out coming out of that development, that's just.
Yeah, we haven't finalized the design yet, um, it's gonna be a function of tweaking the signal and the operation. Um, if we need more than one lane, you know, obviously, we will provide.
So you could potentially put in, say, a right turn lane there, so you could, you know, there would be a s- a a left and a straight, and then maybe a right there or something?
We may, the reason why I say we may is because I don't envision a lot of right turn volume. Being made there, because you have other opportunities to make a right turn on the Deal Road. And if you're at the library site and you wanted to make a right on the Deal Road, you're just gonna come out of the library's driveway and make a a right turn.
Sure, okay.
And we also, further to the west, we have a right out from our site already.
Correct.
I I do have a question, um, if I'm coming off of Logan Road. Um, on that slide there, it shows that I could either, there's two lanes. One to go left, obviously, go in west, the other one, I could go straight or make the right onto Deal Road going east.
Yes.
Okay, reason why I ask, on this one here, it shows that. The left-hand lane could go straight or make the left, and the the right lane can only make a right, so which which one is it?
It's the one that's depicted on this current exhibit.
Are you referring to uh, forty-eight, is that right?
Yeah, you said, right here?
Yep.
And that concludes my testimony, I don't think there's any other um, exhibits to present as they relate to traffic.
Might I ask you one question, just going back to the previous slide? With the existing jug handle, people coming up Route thirty-five north. And they're getting off, and they can enter onto Deal Road, and you said they're gonna propose to increase the size of the island and just restrict. Them to turning east on Deal Road, correct?
Yes.
But where they will be intersecting, there will also be. Uh, across from that or adjacent to it, part of the urban uh. The urban, whatever your terminology is.
Jug handle.
Okay, and I think some people may be tempted to make a lift into there, no? Or is there gonna be some signage indicating there's no left turn into that particular area?
Why don't you go to the overall one? Let's, Mr. Chair, let's go to the overall one, cause I'm I'm not even sure I understand the question. No, it doesn't show.
That one doesn't show.
Well, what if you pull it up a little bit, can you move it up a little?
Was the urban jug handle depicted on the slide that showed that uh. The exit off of Route thirty-five north that would bring them to, oh, here, no?
That's the one, Mr. Chairman, that shows the modification.
You see, so if somebody comes off of that, Route thirty-five north. And goes right to east, what is to stop them, because people don't think clearly sometimes, trying to make a left-hand turn into that? That's my concern.
We will sign and strike.
I'll sign, okay, I'm just curious, thank you.
Let's just see the gray area, they're gonna build that out, so you can't go left.
Any other questions on the board?
Yeah, I I have one, um, can you go back to the the overview of, it's kind, I'm looking at the one that's kind of the zoomed in of just the. Yeah, I I have one, um, can you go back to the the overview of it's kind, I'm looking at the one that's kind of the zoomed in of just the urban jug handle?
Right, so that one's A forty-nine.
Alright, so, uh, and Mister Cyanon asked us earlier about adding that that walkway from the bus stop into the Wawa, which is. I'm I'm glad to see that the bus stop has been moved so that, you know, folks who are taking public transportation are no longer risking their lives crossing the roads. And have easier access into the facility, and one of the things that I've noticed looking at all this is there's pedestrian access everywhere, which is great. Except for this new bank, there's no walkways, there's no access, there's there's only car access is.
There will be, yes, that was an oversight and it's only conceptual at this point.
In fairness, it wasn't an oversight per se, this was conceptual just to show traffic. We're going to have, we're gonna have to revise the plans in their entirety, show you pedestrians, show you the drainage, show you the landscaping. This was just to kind of respond to the comments at the last meeting and get some feedback based on what we're proposing. What our intention is to then sit down with Bill and Jim and fine tune it.
Well, just a quick one, um, since this is still conceptual, is there now, since it seems to not be touched? Is there now a intention potentially to leave the well where it is? Cuz it's.
Oh, I don't know where, I don't know where it is.
It's actually on this exhibit.
It's right behind twenty feet of the bus stop right now.
It's marked, yeah, that's it.
We could leave the well.
For, well, there was some concern about the historic value of the well that had been voiced, I believe, by members of the board, so.
I'm not saying it's not a good idea, or it is a good idea, it's maybe that needs to be looked into, is there anything, cuz. When I asked the question, I understood the, it was brick lined. And I'm not sure that many historic things are brick lined, I'm not saying they're not or they are. I'm just saying that before we have something out there that could have no particular value at all.
I I I defer to my fellow board members on this, but it strikes me as something that provides a unique aesthetic to the site. That seems to be, you know, an ocean town center, that's an ocean landmark, but. The ocean, there you go.
Mister De- and do I pronounce the G or no? So, how do you say? Daphilia, Mister Daphilia, we can look at, one, that wh- when we meet with Bill and Jim, whether or not it's historic. Two, if it's not historic, maybe aesthetically putting something on that corner to give it that sense of place that you're talking about. So we can look at that, this is really just traffic.
So Miss Crimco, uh, to get a uh, understanding of where we are and where we're gonna go uh, for the rest of the evening. Uh, you're done with your direct testimony of the traffic engineer, correct?
Right, subject to. But yes, our affirmative testimony is completed.
So we're really at the midpoint uh, with the understanding that we're gonna end at ten o'clock tonight, so I would suggest we have a ten or so minute break. With the understanding, unless there are any other questions by the board members, then we can open up to the public. And I think it's important to note that, a- as you have emphasized, these are concepts only right now. Uh, and I don't know uh, if you're looking for more imp- uh, input from the board after the public has spoken. But uh, if you're looking for direction.
I think the board has been very forthcoming with their comments and direction and what they want. A- as I'm taking notes, I think we have a very good idea as to what they're looking for, so. I'd invite them to continue doing that, so we can.
So likewise, uh, uh, questions of the traffic engineer would be along the lines of of the concept. Realizing that at some point in time, presumably sooner than later, they're gonna present a finite revised plan. That may or may not be like the one we're talking about tonight.
Couple of things, first, correct to that effect, but if I remember correctly, Dan was never opened up to public questioning at all. So they have the opportunity not only to ask questions about the concepts, but all the traffic testimony. So, right, we we look forward to getting that started.
I'm cool. I'm cool, yeah, I'll wait till uh.
So we're gonna take a ten-minute break and we're gonna come back and resume with questioning from the general public of the traffic expert, thank you. I'd like to bring the meeting back to order, please, if I could. So I I'd just like to clarify for the benefit of the public that the testimony of Mister Zizario, a lot of the uh. Exhibits he presented are conceptual only at this point, so I want to assure the public, you will have the opportunity. To make your comments and question Mister Zizario regarding those conceptual plans, but when. The applicant does make a presentation of plans that are his final plans. Uh, Miss Crimco, I would hope that you would have Mister Zizario back again at that time. So they could again question him regarding the final plans concerning any traffic plans that are presented.
We did make the commitment at the beginning of the hearing that the professionals would return for that purpose. Obviously, I'm not gonna continue reopening uh, for questions, but should anything change and the board members have questions from either engineer. As it relates to those changes, we would make them available.
That's fine.
Uh, let let me just clarify though, because a lot of your plans say concept. So to cut down on questions tonight, uh, wouldn't you agree that. You know, after listening to it, Mister Fitzgerald said, members of the board, that you you obviously gotta go back and talk to the principals. And you're gonna come back with a. Uh, proposed uh, traffic plan, you're gonna fill in the gaps, right? And so it might be shortened testimony, but certainly you're gonna have Mister Zizario talk about the final proposed. And so the public will have the opportunity to ask all questions at that time. So if you don't have any questions about concept tonight. Uh, your rights are gonna be preserved to a- ask Mister Zizario any questions about the issue of traffic, is that fair to say, Miss Crimco?
It's fair to say, eh, well, procedurally, I think what would be more appropriate, he gave all his testimony. If there's questions with regard to traffic as it relates to generally in the report, as it relates to the I T E numbers and the things of that nature. I I would like to get those taken care of, so at the next meeting, we can focus on the changes and the impact of those changes.
I just want assurances, uh, so that the public, uh, doesn't have to worry about dissecting the difference. So we're not gonna have a problem.
Agreed, agreed, and and again, Mister Zizario is coming back. In an hour, you know, let's see how far we get, but again, eh, no, there's not going eh. By law, there's not gonna be any limit as to what he's being asked if I'm reopening him up.
Do you with that Sandy, okay, well, on that note, I'd like to open this up to uh. Questions of Mister Zizario regarding what he presented this evening or even in his previous testimony. So if anybody would like to take the microphone, you can step on up and introduce yourself, thank you. Anyone out there with a question, Mister Sharp, please step up.
Uh, let's see, Scott Sharp, Wana Masa. I guess, I may first start with a, these are related primarily to your previous testimony. I'm trying to ask some questions because uh. Eh, y- you can correct me whenever you need to, I'm trying to, because your report at that time was oral. So I had to primarily use that oral testimony as what I was following by. Uh, if I understood your process, you made first traffic counts, manual traffic counts. At these intersections, is that correct? Okay, and then you take a statistical determination of the site-generated traffic. Okay, alright, and then you use some, there's some model, I guess, you you it was mentioned this evening, the International Transport. Transportation Engineers, I T E, how does that fit into the numbers that you just gave? From last week?
So it's the the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that's I T E. And they publish a publication which is called Trip Generation Manual. It's in its tenth edition, and it's that manual with which traffic engineers. Uh, use trip rates in that manual to estimate how much traffic a particular land use would generate.
Okay, so that's where I think you used the number two hundred and five or so for new trip generated. That your development would generate two hundred and five new trips. Is that where the source of that comes from?
So, just so we clarify, the record is clear. I didn't testify to that number, but I will just for uh, complete information. During a weekday morning peak hour, based on the I T E trip rates. Two hundred and sixty new trips would be generated in round numbers, about a hundred thirty coming in and a hundred thirty going out.
Okay, alright, so um. As I understand the rules that you follow, uh, there's a, that you only address the new trips. Generated by this development. And you don't really count in it, well, the the bypass traffic is still there, correct? It's still going on its way, but it's, y- you're really focused on the new trips.
So a couple things. We account for all traffic that would come into and out of the site. So that includes both new trips as well as pass-by trips. Because at the driveways that are proposed, if you add up all the traffic coming in and out. It's the total traffic that we estimate for the development, and in that total traffic. It's comprised of two components, new traffic that is coming to the area that is not on any of the roads today. And pass-by traffic, which is traffic that is on the roads today, that would come into the site because it got developed.
So you just gave a number two hundred and some odd, is that new trips as well as the pass-by traffic? That is peeling off to go into the site?
That is new trips.
Just new trips? Okay, so do the rules allow you to look at the aspects of. And this would be one of traffic safety in this, I'll, we'll just loo- use Route thirty-five northbound as as the example. So when, and and as we heard, I think in in other questions that that went to you is. You've got traffic that's moving northbound on thirty-five at perhaps up to fifty miles an hour, that's the maximum speed. From stopped at the light to later in the light, you'll have fifty mile an hour traffic. Some of that traffic will peel off to go to try to get into your site. From the pass bypass traffic, that's true? Okay, so you've got those people trying to merge, decelerate and merge right to get into your site. You've got traffic coming through the south side jug handle, merging left and in the acceleration lane. My question is, all of that is what I would consider traffic friction. There's a lot go- and I think that we've heard the term, there's a lot going on at that intersection. Uh, that would have been just bypassing you by, but now you've got a development there. And people are going to be slowing down, speeding up, merging right, merging left from the site. Into the the northbound traffic lanes, and I'm kinda just curious. From what I understood, that your primary focus is on new traffic entering your site. Not the bypass traffic that's entering the site.
No, that's incorrect, at the driveways. A hundred percent of the traffic that's estimated for this development, we've modeled. With one exception, there's some internal trips that are made between the different land uses, so some of the residential may go to. Uh, the convenience store with gas that's proposed, some of the restaurant traffic may go to the convenience store. Uh, with gas that's proposed and and vice versa, so there's some internal trip making that would take place, as I testified to previously. But in terms of new traffic, which is traffic that doesn't exist today, that would be attracted to this area because of the development. And the pass-by traffic that would be attracted to this development from the passing traffic streams. The new trips and the pass-by trips have been modeled a hundred percent at the driveways. The only distinction in terms of assessing operations and impact that I wanna uh. Respectfully submit to you as well as the board, is when we talk about new traffic. The new traffic is what actually impacts off-site intersections. So it's the new traffic and the addition of that new traffic, say to Route thirty-five and Deal Road, that would have an impact.
Cuz I think I, I w- what I was somewhat confused about in the. I guess I s- I saw, I've been to the town hall and I was able to look at your document. And eh, I haven't been able to obtain it quite yet, but in in looking at, they had, you had numbers of bypass vehicles. On Saturday, peak hours of like over a thousand. And so I'm kinda curious of, you know, the numbers that you have. Just don't seem to, in my mind, because it was an oral presentation, I don't quite grasp. That it's as negligible as you implied the other night when you said, well, you've got one, one additional vehicle. And I'm trying to put this picture together, because you had, you mentioned one additional vehicle, northbound, one additional. Vehicle southbound, or uh, whether it was east or west, I didn't catch it all in my notes, but. It seems incomprehensible to me that the numbers are as small as they are in how you determined this and the modeling that you did.
So, as it relates to pass-by trips. I'm not quite sure of the numbers that you reviewed in my report. Um, but the pass-by trips amount to at most. Again, round numbers, cuz I always like to speak to round numbers cuz they're easier to remember. So in the morning, the pass-by trips, morning peak hour, weekday morning peak hour, uh, are four hundred. The P M peak hour, weekday evening peak hour, the three hundred, and on.
Deal Road or thirty-five?
This is total site. And for the Saturday midday peak hour, they're two hundred and fifty. The total traffic that would be generated by the development. Before you account for internal trips and pass-by trips. Those numbers, um, weekday morning peak hour, it's seven hundred fifty trips. Uh, weekday evening peak hour, seven hundred and fifty uh, trips, and Saturday midday peak hour, nine hundred trips.
I will have to struggle with your numbers a a lot more, cuz they just don't ring true to me that. We have that little impact. Alright, Miss Crimco, I retract the last statement.
Speaking to Mister Chair, Mister Chair, I would ask you to please remind to.
Thank you, Miss Crimco, I have been reminded.
Mister Sharp, so, just keep the questions.
Do we wanna, I'm trying to get to an answer from him and saying what the confusion is. Because all I had to work from was a oral presentation.
I understand that.
So that is you, Mister Varelli, that says, you know, that the data wasn't presented in his oral presentation. So it's kinda hard to piece it together, and I'm trying to explain that to him.
Mister Chair, the report is on file, the report copies are available, um.
Uh, Mister Sharp indicated he wasn't unable to procure the.
I can read it over at town hall. I have to pay the Oprah cost to get it copied for me.
And just for the record, I indicated that I would gladly, through Mister uh, Brown, I would gladly email it to Mister Sharp. And he flatly refused accepting via email.
I wa- I don't have any relationship with Miss Crimco's legal firm to do so, I want to get it from the township. Who is the official repository of the document, I'm not gonna bypass. I'm not gonna bypass the town who has the responsibility to uh handle the documents.
I will email it to Ron and then Ron can email it to Mister-
That sounds like that'll that'll get rid of this right now.
I won't deal with Ms. Krimko's firm.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll just proceed on that. You will get the email.
Okay.
Mister Sharp, i- is that okay with you that it will go through me to you?
And you'll notify me when it arrives.
Well, we email it to you directly.
What if somebody else wants it? Usually they come with a restriction on being able to duplicate and send. That's what your last C D you sent me.
We're trying to make it easier for you.
Just for me or for the rest of the public? It has a copyright on it. What can I say?
Look, the the answer uh uh ala Ms. Krimko is to uh do a favor to expedite this, that she will uh send it over tomorrow uh to our director and he will send it to you. Uh and and that's to satisfy your particular concerns. The rest of the people can uh comply with uh going down there and looking at it, okay? And there's no, there's no copyright concern on that, right, Ms. Krimko?
There is not, no.
Right, so don't worry about that. Next question.
Okay, the last couple of of uh fairly easy questions is whether or not when you did your uh traffic analysis, did you uh, were you provided with a copy of the Township of Ocean Pedestrian and Bicycle Network Plan?
No.
Okay, and when you did your analysis, the, from a traffic safety perspective, did you uh look at the New Jersey D O T Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan of 2016?
No.
Okay. One last question, which is, has to do with um along Deal Road westbound, uh does your safety analysis take into account the uh removal of the berm from the standpoint of proximity of traffic to the uh proposed walkway and bicycle path inside? Being outside the berm or inside a berm, but now there's no berm, does that affect pedestrian or vehicle traffic safety?
I'm not quite sure what berm you're referring to.
Well, there was a, there was a berm in the in the ordinances and I think there's a proposed variance to do away with that berm. And but as I looked at your map up here, you showed the uh the pedestrian walkway right up alongside the uh the Deal Road westbound. So I just didn't know if uh some of the D O T things say there's berms and traffic is separated from from the pedestrian areas by use of berms. Without a berm there, does that affect pedestrian or traffic safety?
No.
The berm does not.
Does not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mister Sharp. Anyone else have a question for this witness?
Thank you. Charles Curly. Um, you mentioned something about the total-
Mister Curly, before you proceed, can you give your address, please?
Forty-eight Cold Indian Springs Road.
Thank you.
You said something about the total traffic that your site will be generating per day. Can you give me those numbers again?
No, what I cited was total traffic, peak hour.
Okay.
So weekday morning peak hour.
Okay, let's just go with that. Nice, small, concise.
Round numbers, 740 trips.
So you're gonna add in 740 trips in the morning?
No.
Okay. What does that 740 cover?
There's three components. Internal trips that are made between the various uses that are proposed on the site as an example. Somebody living in the proposed townhomes may drive over to the Wawa to get something from the convenience store and then turn around and drive back to their home. That trip was never external to the site, it was internal to the site and never went on any of the surrounding roads. So internal trips do not impact traffic either on the surrounding roads or at the site driveways themselves, cause they're internal. The second component is pass by trips. Those are trips that would come into the site as an example for the Wawa or for the convenience store with gas. Somebody traveling on Route 35 northbound today, if this development is built and they were passing by the site already, they may elect to turn into the site to get gas or a convenience item and then turn out of the site and continue on their way northbound on 35. That's a pass by trip. Pass by trips also don't impact adjacent roadways and intersections, cause they're already traveling through adjacent intersections and roadways.
I'll disagree with that one, because the traffic slows down, which impacts other traffic.
That doesn't go to operations, that goes to inconvenience to other drivers, but but put that aside. And then the third component is new traffic, new trips, and that is traffic that is generated because you uh do the development and the development's gonna attract um additional vehicles to the area because it's built and and oftentimes there's some difficulty um conceptualizing what new traffic is versus pass by traffic. So I'll just give you an example that I've used in the past. I do a lot of these meetings. Um if my wife were to ask me on my way home from a hearing or on my way home from work to pick up a gallon of milk, I, the way I drive home from work every day, I pass by a ShopRite supermarket every day when I drive home from work. If I were to stop at that ShopRite supermarket on my way home from work and got the milk and then continued on my way to go home, that would be a pass by trip. I'm already on, and it's Route 1, I'm already on Route 1 coming home, but I stopped that particular day to pick up milk. So I'm a pass by trip as it relates to that ShopRite supermarket. Now if my, if I said I couldn't for whatever reason and my wife had to leave our home, drive to the ShopRite supermarket to pick up that milk and then turned around and drove back home, that is a new trip. So that's the difference, because she would be making a trip, she wouldn't be there like I was, driving home from work. She would make a new trip to get to that supermarket. So every road that she would travel along and every intersection she would travel through, she would be a new vehicle along that path.
Okay, so how many new trips are we talking about?
So weekday morning peak hour, uh round numbers, 260.
260 in one hour?
Correct.
New?
Correct.
And how long does it take 260 cars to get through the area?
It depends on what direction they're coming from uh and going to.
About? Crystal ball, whatever.
If you ask me what a specific movement is in terms of delay, I can tell you that. I can't tell you how long it takes for somebody to travel through the area.
Okay, so what kind of delay are we talking about?
What movement are you of interest in asking me about?
The worst situation is east-west on Deal Road. At peak hours, it's terrible. I avoid it. So I won't do business in that area. So you're adding 260 cars, trips, whatever, through that area, which is gonna delay all the other cars that are already going through that area, correct?
So we would expect about 30% of the traffic that would be attracted to and from the site would be north on Route 35. So to and from the north, about 30% would be to and from the south along Route 35. And the balance, which is 40%, 20% to and from the west and 20% to and from the east along Deal Road, that corridor. So about 40% of the new traffic would be along the Deal Road corridor, split between the east side of town and the west side of town. Based on those new trips and that distribution, you're looking on the average about one new vehicle in each direction along new road every one to two minutes because of this development. I would respectfully submit to you and the public as well as the board, that level of additional traffic is not gonna create any discernible changes in terms of traffic operations. So if you go out there today and you look at operations, if the board was inclined to approve this development and it got built and you went back out again and looked at operations, you're not gonna be able to discern a noticeable difference because of this development. In fact, you probably will notice some better operations, cause of the improvements that we've discussed.
Okay, those averages that you quote, are they based on national averages or New Jersey averages?
National.
Is there a factor, because New Jersey is the most densely populated state, that we should figure in?
No, there are no factors for New Jersey.
Okay. Part of your plan is to change westbound Deal Road from two lanes going across to one lane? What's the difference in the traffic flow in a traffic cycle? One lane going across versus two lanes going across?
Well, effectively, as you've um articulated, during peak hours and particularly during summer peak hours, during non-summer peak hours, I've been at that intersection for several hours, probably on the order of 20 hours, watching traffic. And it does not rise to the level of operations that summer conditions present. So respectfully, like tonight, I was out there from 4:00 to 6:00 watching traffic. There were no issues along Deal Road or Route 35 in terms of excessive delays. But what does happen, particularly during summer season, is yes, there are two lanes that go through the Route 35 intersection today in the westbound direction. But that shared left turn slash through lane, which is the one all the way to the left, next to the double centered yellow line, that effectively becomes a left turn lane. Only. Because inevitably, people that wanna go through using that lane will get stuck behind somebody waiting to make the left turn and then they try to cut over to the adjacent lane, that's the shared through right lane. So you have the ability to go through the intersection in westbound direction in two lanes, but practically speaking, you only have the ability to go through in one lane, particularly during summer conditions, because the shared left through lane effectively becomes a left turn lane only.
That is not my observation of that intersection.
It is of mine.
And it is part of your testimony when you talk about the merging of traffic by the bank. You testified to that.
Yes.
So, how many cars can get through the intersection in one green light if there's two lanes going across versus one lane going across?
It's not a simple answer, because it's a function of how much green time is allocated to particular movements, how much volume is occurring at that particular instance in time. It's not a simple answer.
I would think that that should be standard statistic.
Could I interrupt for one second, just to go along with you on, it's me, it's the board. Dan, didn't you do a capacity analysis with the initial traffic analysis that you provided?
Yes.
Have you done one to contrast what existing condition showed, which is what that was versus, or or, oh, I'm sorry. Did you do an existing capacity condition also, analysis also?
Yes.
And how about with the concept that we're talking about tonight? Have you done one for that?
Yes.
I think those are the numbers, particularly the westbound movement, that that the man is asking for.
Right, and I couldn't interrupt to point that out.
I'm sorry.
No, I wanted to.
Alright, I so I mean, I I think he's looking for the simple numbers. I think you have them in some of the documents that are on file a- and maybe something you've done to kind of, as you're working through the concept in 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 your office intermediate product. And maybe those numbers would help a lot, cause I I'm I'm thinking that's exactly what he's asking for.
So I can speak in terms of average delay per vehicle, cause that is the output of the analysis that your engineer, the board's engineer just referenced. Just to give you an idea of differences in terms of operations. So without the project, westbound movements, and we'll talk about A M. Peak hour, weekday A M. Peak hour. So based on the capacity analysis, heading in the westbound direction, left turn movements operate on average at 28.9 seconds per vehicle as they're going through the intersection. And movements that are looking to go through or make a right turn, 38.9 seconds, average delay per vehicle. So all the vehicles that are making those movements in that hour during the weekday morning, those are the average delays. By contrast, the improvements that we are proposing to make, the left turn movements, the delay, average delay per vehicle will go up slightly to 37 seconds per vehicle. However, the delays for the vehicles that are proceeding through will see an average delay of 27.9, so a reduction in delay for vehicles moving through the intersection. And for vehicles making a right turn westbound onto Route 35 northbound, their delay, average delay per vehicle will be 13.7 seconds. And the reason why those delays are coming down is because we're providing the exclusive right turn lane on the westbound approach.
Have there been any studies to confirm the estimates versus what gets implemented? The reality after changes are made?
As it relates to this development?
Uh, similar situations where you've provided traffic estimates and then the development is done and then you go back and see what the real result is.
There has been one follow-on study that comes to mind over the years that I have been doing this, and it was for Stop and Shop supermarket in Elizabeth. It's at the corner of Route 27 and North Avenue. We did do a follow-on study or post-development opening study for the reasons that uh you've cited. And the estimates were essentially dead on with what reality, what what that supermarket actually generated.
Okay. Um, on some of the plans I saw, um, the roads in the townhouse area were listed as no on-street parking. Is that still the case?
I would defer to the site engineer on that on that question.
I mean, he's here and he's sworn if he just wants to come up and quickly answer it.
It's fine.
So the townhome streets have been designed to the 30-foot wide residential site improvement standards, which is parking on both sides. Now, they couldn't park across a driveway, and there are a number of driveways that are also head-on parking, uh but there are opportunities for parking on both sides of the street.
So the plans that are in the office are incorrect? Or old plans or?
I'm not sure what plans you looked at, but the current plan that's before the board is parking on both sides.
Okay, I will verify that.
I'll sit next to you, Scott. Uh Jackie Mansell, 610 Deal Road.
Hi.
Um, hi, I have some notes from your first testimony, so I'm just gonna speak a little bit about the Chick-fil-A traffic. Um, if I remember correctly, you um you gave an estimate based on average Chick-fil-A numbers. Yes, my question was, why you, did you look at it at peak? Because from what I've read, it seems like Chick-fil-A may be something, we we often speak about the Wawa. It seems like Chick-fil-A is really a- It seems like Chick-fil-A is really a a very busy operation, especially at peak hours. And, and it seems to be peak hours, uh, living on Deal Road is when I see the traffic just back up right down the street. So, um, you know, around dinnertime, people heading home. Have you, have you done a study at peak and what is the difference?
So the traffic study that we've prepared assumes, let me back up, it identifies peak hour volumes based on traffic counts. So we do counts from seven to nine in the morning, four to six in the evening, then eleven and two on Saturday. The highest hour in those periods, and when I say highest hour, I mean the highest for consecutive fifteen-minute periods where the volume is the highest is what we use for the basis of the traffic study. So in other words, you may have peak commute time in the afternoon between four and six. Whatever hour there are the highest volumes in that two-hour period, maybe it's four fifteen to five fifteen, maybe it's four thirty to five thirty, wherever that hour falls, that's what we use to establish the existing traffic volumes on the road network. When we estimate traffic for the various land uses, in this instance, the fast food restaurant, we'll call it Chick-fil-A.
Well, it is Chick-fil-A, right?
I guess, I don't know. You have to ask.
Because it's a unique business.
Agreed.
Okay.
We assume, based on those estimates, that its peak time of activity is happening exactly at the same time as the traffic volumes on the streets are at their highest.
Correct, that's our concern.
That's what we analyze. That's exactly what we analyze. So we analyze the peak of the uses and assume the peak of the uses occurs at the same time as the traffic on the adjacent roads thirty-five and Deal Road are peaking.
Did you do it with an analysis of fast food, say a Wendy's, which is also on thirty-five? Or did you specifically to, due to the uniqueness of the volume of traffic that Chick-fil-A, there have been articles written about police having to come in direct traffic where there are Chick-fil-A's. So it seems to be a more, I think it requires maybe a little bit more in depth.
If I'd ask Mr. Chair, if you could ask if they could limit it to a question and then at the public portion, if there's testimony that want, that they want to provide with regard to Chick-fil-A, then you could do it at that time, but just limit it to questions.
That's fine.
So I guess my question was, I'll rephrase it. My question is, did you estimate the traffic for Chick-fil-A at the same average you would study a Wendy's or a McDonald's?
Yes.
Okay, so that, okay. So the next thing, I guess, Estelle brings up something. I see it's, it, it, you know, it, it's something she keeps bringing up because she's trying to wrap her mind around it, and I can't seem to wrap my mind around it because I use that jug handle to head north, uh, to New York. Often I'll go to the Food Town. I mean, these are real-life situations. It's, I'll put it in a question. But I, I use, I take, I go to Food Town sometimes to bring things up to the city and then I go around the jug handle. And I am fighting to like pick up the speed to get into the, um, into the lane, uh, to be able to continue north. I've never had the situation where at the same time I'm revving up and, you know, I'm looking in the rearview mirror, I'm trying to find my way. I appreciate that we have a longer ramp to do that now, but trying to have people now cut in front of me to the right is going to be very scary. Even if I know I can go farther, how fast can I go if people are starting to go to the right? How, how do you see that navigating? Because I just see us hitting into each other like...
Okay, Mr. Chair, respectfully, if, if anecdotal information is required for questions, that's fine.
So if you could just ask the question.
No, 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 let me, if I'm, offering an opinion
Right, it's a penny testimony.
is different. That's testimony. If you're asking the question, if I was coming from Food Town and I tried to cut in, what is your opinion of someone cutting me off? That's one thing. But telling the board what your opinion is or that it's scary or that it's a hard movement, that would be testimony.
Okay, can you explain to me the best way for me to go through Deal Road to continue to accelerate to get at the speed of the highway? How do I navigate, how do I get into the lane when someone is speeding to get to the right to go into the site? Do I slow down and let them go ahead of me?
It depends on the situation, so you either would speed up or slow down given the particular situation. One of the things that I think, um, could actually occur is because of the driveway that's proposed, people that are in the Route thirty-five lane that you're trying to change and merge into.
I'm trying to go the left.
They actually may slow down and give you a gap where you could easily come over and then they take the spot that you were in to turn into the driveway. And I can tell you, that's the exact situation I'm confronted with every night when I'm leaving to come home from work uh, on two ninety-five, where I have an on-ramp and then there's an off-ramp and I want to get past the off-ramp and people that are trying to get to the off-ramp will let me in to the live lane while they then go on to the off-ramp. So very similar situation.
Um, I think I would rather, okay, is it possible, is it possible to do the left turn? I know I heard something, when I came in, they were talking about it. Is there something against us making the left turn when I'm coming, uh, when I'm heading east on Deal and I want to head north? I, I feel the jug handle that I'm taking now is no longer going to work with the development across the street. I, all I have to look out...
Can you ask your question, please? A question?
Can the, can the, can the jug handle that exists today be eliminated and I make a left turn if I'm heading north on thirty-five? And they keep the jug handle that's there specifically just for people that need to, that are going north on thirty-five and want to make a right into Deal Road?
So the board asked that question at the last meeting, essentially trying to get a left turn eastbound Deal Road.
Correct.
So you can turn directly on to thirty-five northbound.
Because then you're in the left lane, you're in the fast lane, and you're not...
And your board engineer also asked the same question and directed me when we went to DOT to talk about the urban jug handle concept and getting rid of the far-side jug handle at the corner, directed me to ask that specific question of DOT, which I did, and the flat-out answer was no.
Can it be revisited based on our testimony and what, what seems to be all of us that really live here are going to deal with?
We've asked the question of DOT, they told us no. I think that question and that issue has come to a close, unfortunately.
So then, maybe the entrance has to be further north. Can the entrance be farther north than it is today?
There's absolutely no need to shift the entrance further north and I don't know if you've came, came late or not to hear my testimony. That entrance can be as close to the Deal Road intersection as a hundred feet. We're, um, proposing to locate it a little more than five hundred feet away from the intersection.
I did come a little late because I thought there were two other, uh, there are two other things on the schedule.
That's why I'll, I'll help you out with whatever I testified, uh, before you got here.
Okay, so, um, and then can you just explain to me why is the, if a jug handle is no longer there, why does it have to be replaced with a bank?
That's not part of traffic engineering. I can't answer that question.
So the traffic study that you're giving has something to do with a bank being there?
If the question is, has our traffic study on record accounted for a bank at the corner? The answer is no, it has not.
Okay, so can you have that prepared for us for the next meeting? What extra traffic the bank will bring to the already, uh, calculated traffic?
Yes, I can provide that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Sharp, you have another question?
One, one last question, and at the, uh, exit from the development on Deal Road at the intersection with Logan Road, based on my understanding, does the traffic analysis that you do determine, uh, the queuing at that intersection for vehicles, which include trucks and cars, who are departing the, the development? And if they see a backup on Deal Road westbound, do they have the choice to proceed on Logan Road?
Yes, they do.
And do you know how much traffic will be going on Logan Road? And I do not know the designation, I'm sure these gentlemen over here do, of whether or not that's considered less, it's residential or, I don't know, I didn't hear it from your description. I believe there's three little league fields on that.
Correct, yes.
And residential.
So morning peak hour, we'd anticipate about twenty-eight vehicles during the morning peak hours, about one every two minutes.
And, so, and that can be a combination of trucks and cars. There's nothing that prohibits trucks from leaving at that intersection from your development, the delivery trucks which are in the, the civil plan that says how many trucks deliver to the site, to the individual businesses, and or, and obviously they would hopefully use thirty-five, but they don't have to. They could proceed through the development and exit at Logan Road, and there's nothing that would keep them from doing that. And to avoid the thirty-five, would they then be able to just use Logan Road as the alternative route?
You are correct. To my knowledge, there's nothing that precludes trucks from using Logan Road either to come into the site or to exit the site. However, I think you raise a good point. We can look at, um, incorporating signage into the site plan that would preclude trucks from using the Logan Road site driveway. There's really no reason for trucks to use it because we have access, the right-in, right-out access out to Deal Road. And, and obviously, both the applicant as well as the township's desire would be not to have trucks using Logan Road from the site. So you raise a good point and I think we should add signage to that effect.
I'd like, I'd like more than signage, but that's all right. We'll take signage to start with.
If I might maybe just address that a little bit more.
Right ahead, Bill.
Um, there's really, if you think about destinations and, and what would generate truck movements, to head south on Logan Road, there's essentially no commercial uses and no way out of the highway that's convenient between Deal Road and Sunset. Double air, no question of air. But when you get to Sunset, I think if you look, if you're driving a truck and you want to get southbound on, on thirty-five, this new configuration that's proposed at Deal and thirty-five is probably a far lot better than Sunset going around a far-side jug because Sunset is fairly congested between Logan and the highway. And then having to do a far-side jug, there's not a lot of motivation for a trucker that I can see, having lived here all my life, to, to go south on Logan.
Except, Mr. Fitzgerald, to avoid the intersection of Deal Road and thirty-five.
But, but the, the alternative is now after that slow drive on Logan through residential, you get to Sunset and thirty-five, which I think in any situation is going to be far worse than this one.
Or they turn right on Al Air and you have the same residential street.
Right.
You know, that, that all those, uh, anybody that's departing, they have the choice.
No, I, I don't, I'm not disputing that.
And there is going to be increased traffic on, on Logan and some of that may go to Al Air or Sunset. I just assume you skip Sunset if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I don't, I don't see it, you know.
It couldn't get a whole lot worse except if it became Deal and thirty-five, so.
Isn't there a regulation though on tonnage on a road like Logan? Um, someone that had a, attended one of the meetings was talking about trucks being like four, so many tons.
Frankly, I, I'm not sure what the restrictions are along Logan, if any, I'm not sure.
There aren't any in town?
I don't know of any. We will answer, we'll get the answer for that for you for the next hearing.
We did investigate truck restrictions along Deal Road. And east of thirty-five, there are no restrictions. West of thirty-five, there is a restriction to four tons or smaller.
So to what, a question, um, that the other gentleman had about after a site is built and operating, um, if calculations were off. So say we really wind up in a realm, just to say, okay, if we wind up in a mess and if traffic's at a standstill, what is the, um, the backup plan? Do, do we add other lanes to Deal Road? I mean, has there been any conversation about if the impact of this development is greater than what's anticipated? Um, what is, has another option?
What I think you're doing is you're, you're, uh, putting the cart before the horse here. What you're saying is if this was approved and whatever was developed, uh, didn't work out to your liking.
Not to my liking, to the functionality of our community.
Okay, then what will you, what would be your course of action at that point?
Correct.
Right, well, um, that's above and beyond anything that occurs here, but you would have to probably, I would say, see the, uh, town council or talk to people on the town council about making whatever type of, uh, traffic adjustments need to be made.
I just think that there's so much planning going at, at this part of the process before the land is...
But you're asking, you're asking them to plan for something that is not foreseen because you're giving a what-if. You're giving a...
They do that on the airplane every time.
Well, you're giving a hypothetical case.
But it's good to know.
But it's not fair because you can't be certain about it. So this can only occur after this is approved and then it doesn't go according to, or make the plan that you would like.
No, it's not what I like. We're talking the functionality of the town.
I don't want to argue with you, whoever likes.
I'm not arguing.
I'm just telling you, this fellow put forth a plan, okay? But you're saying, what if it doesn't work?
Well, if the traffic impact is much greater and we're at a standstill...
But you're not going to know that until it happens. Is that not correct?
No, but I think there should be a backup plan. Are we going to have more lanes then? Is there room in, in Deal Road?
To, to the extent that I can, the applicant is required to present the testimony of a qualified expert, which this board deemed as an expert, as to his expert opinion of what the anticipated traffic is going to be as a result of this development and what mitigation, if any, is being proposed in order to address that traffic. We're presenting our witness. The board has an engineer on staff that advises, and we all know for the twenty years that I've been practicing, if Bill disagrees with something, he's not shy about letting you know, whether it be in a letter, as you saw from our initial traffic report that was submitted. Bill had a five, six-page traffic review letter challenging what was provided in that traffic report, which resulted in the revised letter. I understand that the objectors, and I think Ms. Wenzel, uh, came to at least one of the other meetings with her own traffic expert, who she may decide to put forward at some point. So again, if the public or the board questions the veracity or the qualifications of the traffic expert being put forward, they have the opportunity to hire their own experts to do the same analysis. So this is, in this case, and any case all over the state of New Jersey. The best that we can do is hire the best professionals that we can to offer the analysis and the board hires their best professionals to make sure that the analysis is correct. This goes to traffic, this goes to stormwater, this goes to everything. We're presenting an expert who's giving you his expert opinion as to the projections in the most conservative way possible, looking at worst-case scenario in every which way. And that's his testimony.
Is that a sufficient answer? At this point?
For now.
Okay. So we have another questioner there, as, as these two gentlemen here.
Dennis Howell at sixteen thirty-eight Holbrook Street. I have a, a different tack. I'm, I'm curious. Uh, with the access road to the library, do you have any idea how many parking spots will be lost in the library parking lot?
I do not.
Mr. Lang, two?
Two.
Has there been a traffic study of the traffic in the library parking lot?
Not a traffic study. Do you mean a parking study, Mr. Hullett, or traffic?
Traffic, actually.
So now that...
Actually, there's, um, I can testify. Sometimes there's, the parking lot can get full surprising, surprisingly often. And it'd be difficult, uh, if there is more traffic going through the parking lot, it might pose a danger to some of the patrons in the parking lot.
If I might, looking at that from my point of view... If, if I might, looking at that from my point of view, which is your point of view, because I'm here representing the town, I think personally, the trade-off for two parking stalls, as long as it isn't frequently overloaded over there, to be able to use a light at the intersection rather than to try to head east on Deal Road from the existing driveway, which will continue to remain that goes into that site, is far better because at least you have the light giving you gaps to make that as opposed to trying to see around the queue, say make, wait, make a left, see someone uh eastbound on Deal Road ju- and jet out there, you know, it, it, I think the light is a lot better, but maybe they can look to find the, the two extra spots that they're losing so there, at least there isn't a net negative, it's a positive by getting the light plus not losing spots.
Actually, I'm glad that it's only two spots and I'm, and I think it's also.
As many as three, I don't know for sure, but typically if you're gonna put a twenty-four-foot roadway in and parking stalls are nine feet, depending on how things line up, it's probably gonna be between two and three at the most.
Yes, I do understand that and I do appreciate the fact that they'd be able to make a left on Deal Road much easier. The one place I'd be concerned with, if I'm allowed to say that, is that people going west on Deal Road, if they see a backup at Logan Road, they will have a tendency uh at least sometime to use the parking lot as a rat run to get into the site. And I think that might be an interesting circumstance with people going there because the sightlines there are not very good.
Mr. Hallett, so can I read, is your question whether or not? The, the question is whether or not the traffic engineer anticipates that people are gonna use the library parking lot as a cut-through into our site?
I do not.
Can we lay a bet on that? I think if people see, think they can save a nanosecond, they will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, David Weiner, twelve sixteen Walnut Avenue, Wanamasa.
Hi.
Right by a golf course, thirty-five years, never golfed. Okay.
Never, it's never too late to start.
It is for me, I'm too busy, I'm a union man, I don't have time for that. Um, are you familiar with the rules of the planning board as established on June twenty-fifth of nineteen ninety?
No.
Are you aware that that, those rules stipulate that these meetings are to start at eight o'clock and not seven thirty?
Mr. Chair, I have to object, Mr. Weiner, these are not traffic-related questions.
Please ask questions of the witness, sir.
They're, they're a foundation for the questions that are forthcoming that do have to do with that. I'll, I'll get to them as I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Were you sworn in for this meeting? For these meetings?
At the last hearing, yes.
And are you aware that the public is supposed to be sworn in for these meetings as well?
That's not true.
Okay, a couple of things, fir- this wit- this witness is not an expert on the rules for the planning board. So I, I'd ask that the Mr. Weiner, limit his questions to the testi- the traffic testimony that was offered.
So ruled. Right. I'll clarify that for you, a- as we, we have said many times uh during the course of this hearing and we say periodically, probably for every application, um, there's a time and place uh for everything. So when people are asking questions, we don't usually uh demand that the questioners be sworn. However, later on, uh, when uh the public is permitted to give comments and testimony, then we do swear everybody in.
And, and just for, and just for the record, I believe that um, Ms. Wenzel was sworn at a previous meeting, which is the only reason why I didn't ask to have her sworn if she was making statements tonight.
This witness was sworn in last time, as Ms. Krimko said at the beginning of this evening. Uh, he remains under oath with, which is true.
Have I been sworn in?
No, you don't need to be, as long as you just a- ask questions.
I respectfully suggest that we look at the planning board, rules, please.
Well, look, we're.
I, I, again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste our time.
Attorney has already violated by speaking directly to the people here.
I'm not, I'm not gonna waste.
Spoke to him.
I'm not gonna waste my time debating the rules, but as was stated at a previous meeting, the rules are subject to the discretion of the board chair, are not set in stone as long as they follow the municipal law.
That's correct.
Does the public have a memorialized right to utilize the private property in order to access?
Can you ask a question of the witness, sir?
Yes.
Okay, please do, because if you don't.
No, 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 that is a question, tha- that's a fair question.
Gee, thanks a lot.
He's asking, is the public allowed to utilize our property? And that's part of what he testified to.
He did, okay.
Okay, I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear him say that.
Yes.
They do have a memorialized right to.
Not yet.
Were it approved?
Not, not indiscriminately, okay, if I might, because we have a similar situation at Seaview where when Seaview was designed, there was a ring road around that. Now, there was an understanding that the general public could use the ring road to get, say, from Sunset Avenue to uh sixty-six. Over the years, to be sure that that stayed enforced, uh, as Seaview has come in for various changes, sir, we, we've actually made them memorialize a written easement agreement, which is on file at the county clerk's office. Preserving that right for the public. So if this gets approved and that ability to make a right from Deal Road west across the site and work your way out to Route thirty-five is a part of it, the urban jug handle as they refer to it, or vice versa, the, the clockwise, that would be memorialized by a written easement agreement filed in the office of the county clerk.
Is that requisite?
It will be, absolutely, I'm tell, I'm telling you on the record, it will be. It's not, it's, it's not a, I'm sorry, there's no law that requires it, but I'm sure the DOT would to preserve their rights because that's.
There is a law and the laws, and as was testified to by uh Mr. De Serey at the beginning of the hearing, the DOT would require a formal easement be recorded with the county, providing those rights.
Right, but, but Title thirty-nine is a set of laws regarding traffic. But that doesn't require that the easement be granted, but I'm stating on the record because it will be required. If this is approved, if it's not approved, it obviously won't.
And let me just weigh in because I'm the one that met with DOT. DOT will require public access for the urban jug handle. The form that it's likely gonna take is an easement granted from the owner to the state.
And you testified about that.
Yes, I did.
And, and if it's granted, there would be condition in the resolution, uh, making that uh to be the case and you'd have to go through the steps to make sure that it's in proper form and it will be uh recorded, just like the Seaview uh easement was.
It's Mr. De Serey, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Were your questions posed to the DOT in writing?
No.
Were any of the responses provided you in writing?
No.
Will there be stop signs within the complex, the private property?
Yes.
Do they have to be recognized by the DOT as legitimate in order to be policed legally by the township?
The answer is no, however, Title thirty-nine, which is the motor vehicle statute in our state, if it is enacted by the governing body of the township onto this site, then the police do have enforcement powers of any regulatory traffic control device, including stop signs.
I'm sorry, by this body or by the municipal council?
The governing body of the township.
The municipal council.
Correct.
What would happen, sir, is that if, again, if it's approved, and only if it's approved, this board would recommend in writing to the council that it, it, it would make it a condition of approval on a developer and would recommend that the township council uh enact Title thirty-nine upon the property.
Otherwise, the abrogation of those signs would be, could not be deemed illegal.
Correct, in other words, you would not get, you would not be able to give a ticket.
That's right.
Right, correct.
Okay, no further questions, thank you very much.
Somebody make a motion to uh.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn since.
Well, we have to talk about carrying it, notice.
Okay, we will do that first.
Please.
Well, do you wanna make a motion that, that we don't, that we don't need any more com- comment from this witness?
We don't need to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Obviously, for the notice purposes, I'd ask that we be carried to the board's next available date without further notice. But what I would also request is the opportunity to uh arrange for a special hearing date in May or June or following, since it doesn't appear that we're gonna finish up. So I'd like for notice purposes to carry it to the next meeting date without further notice. And if uh Mr. Kirk and I can come to a special hearing date that works for the board and for the applicant and it's uh, and it's professionals, then I would renotice to that date if it occurs before the next meeting.
That would be fun.
So what is that date, Mr. Chair?
The next date?
The next regular meeting day.
The next regular hearing is May twenty?
Twentieth.
Twentieth, May twentieth.
Alright, so this would be carried without further notice to May twentieth?
Yes.
Alright, and in the interim, I'll work with Mr. Kirk to see if we can come up with some special hearing dates.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Favorite and send Amy your updated list of.
Say yes.
Tonight, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.